You can.
Right, Doug. Good evening and thank you for viewing the December 2 regular meeting of the Arcata City Council. The city council meeting is held as a teleconference in response to the local efforts to reduce the spread of the COVID-19 virus. We want to encourage everyone to keep up the efforts to slow the spread of COVID-19 in Arcata. We know that by wearing masks and practicing social distance, this is thing we can again flatten the curve and keep our businesses open. Please support safe shopping by masking up in Arcata. If you wish to make public comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods or for individual agenda item, there are two ways to do so. One, if you are logged onto the Zoom meeting webinar, click on the raise your hand on the right-hand side of your screen. When it's time for public comment and on the item that you wish to speak on, the clerk will unmute you. You will have two minutes to comment. Method two, you can access the meeting by phone. Call the number at the bottom of the screen, enter the meeting ID also at the bottom of the screen. Press star nine on your phone. This will raise your hand. When it is time for public comment on the item on which you wish to speak, the clerk will unmute your phone. You'll hear a prompt that will indicate that your phone is unmuted. You will have two minutes to comment. Next is flag salute. If you would like to join me, please stand for the flag salute. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Winkler?
Here.
Vice Mayor Patino?
Here.
Councilmember Pereira?
Here.
Councilmember Watson?
Here.
All present.
Next is ceremonial matters. And item A certificate of recognition presented to Wyatt Dean Wheatley for earning the rank of Eagle Scout. Wyatt Dean Wheatley joined Arcata Cub Scout Pack 95 as a second grader. During his Boy Scout years with Arcata's Troop 9 Crater Lake Council Boy Scouts of America under the the leader leadership of Scoutmaster John Erickson. Wyatt faithfully helped American Legion Arcata Post 274 every memorial day by placing an American flag on each veteran's grave site at Greenwood Cemetery and every Easter by helping to hide 100 dozen eggs on the Arcata Plaza for the annual Easter icon. He also helped prepare and pack food boxes for the needy at the Arcata Presbyterian Church's Christmas basket food drive. Wyatt was dedicated to protecting and restoring Arcata's community forest, watersheds, and the Martian Wildlife Sanctuary, devoting hundreds of hours in environmental cleanup efforts. For his major Eagle Community Service Project, Wyatt worked under the guidance of Scoutmaster Chris Care to build four wooden storage boxes so that the Greenwood Cemetery could properly store the memorial American flags for veterans. Wyatt was awarded the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest rank awarded by the Boy Scouts of America, and received recognition on July 7, 2019 at his Court of Honor. Fewer than seven out of 100 Boy Scouts ever achieved this rank. Wyatt dedicates his honor to his grandfather Woodrow Dean Wheatley, also an Eagle Scout and retired US Navy Captain, and to the memory of both his late Scoutmasters John Erickson and Chris Care. Arcata City Council thanks Wyatt Dean Wheatley for his proud service to his community and congratulates him on earning the rank of Eagle Scout, dated today, December 2, 2020, and signed by myself as mayor.
And Mayor, we do have, I think Wyatt and Mark Beetley here. If you want to unmute yourself?
Yes, please go ahead and speak.
Thank you for thank you for the city council for re- recognizing my Eagle Scout Award. Also, thank my grandfather Woody for inspiring me and also thanks for my Scoutmasters for all they did for me.
And I'd like to add on to this. I really want to thank the council for recognizing. Wyatt, we had been trying to do this for some time. I believe Councilmember Watson and and Mr. Winkler also attended his Court of Honor. And we've been trying to schedule this for some time. And I wanted to recognize that Mayor Winkler initially when Wyatt was doing his Eagle project, we were going to do the restoration of the historic display over at the Safeway Shopping Center. But halfway through that, it got demolished and so anyways, we had to shift gears and so the project was at Greenwood. So I also Wyatt and I wanted to both thank all the council members and city staff for all the service that they're doing under these very difficult times, recognize that. And I wanted to also just, I know this is probably more a public comment, but I just wanted to take this opportunity, having served on the council for many years, and I know that we're getting down to some of the last meetings for a couple of you. And I just wanted to say that it was a tremendous honor serving with both Councilmember Patino and Paul. I don't think there's anyone that cares more about people of Arcata than you. And especially for those, the most vulnerable in our community. I think that is a now the people of Arcata owe a great deal of gratitude to you for all the service you've provided. And I thank you personally, and it was an honor to work with you. And to Mayor Winkler, you know, all that you have done for the city, your expertise in land use and energy and waste management. You know, they have steered an incredible course for the city that we will all benefit from for many, many years. And I know it's a pleasure for both councilmembers Pira and Watson to also serve with you too. But I just wanted to acknowledge that I really thank you for, not only for this honor for Wyatt here tonight, but for all the years that you all have served. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, and good luck, Wyatt.
Oh, thank you, Mark, and thank you, Wyatt, and congratulations again, Wyatt. Next is item B proclamation in recognition of Human Rights Awareness Month, December 20th, or December 2020. Whereas the United Nations Assembly adopted the Universal Declaration of Human Rights on December 1948, and this marked the first attempt in human history to set down the minimum rights every person should enjoy. And whereas in 2020, public awareness and a lack of civility has grown amongst groups of people and individuals in their ability to discuss topics of the day without anger or fear. And whereas speech, whether free or inhibited, is now strained by intolerant adversaries and from a multitude of pressures, including not limited to statements by family members, public officials on social media and in schools with anger and hatred going unchallenged in our daily lives, which can lead to bullying and fear-provoking actions. And whereas hate speech, intolerant language, bias and discrimination have led to actions which are physically violent, emotionally intimidating, and in some cases cause physical harm. Such a transformation within our culture is now eroding and will continue to further erode the peace and tranquility our community expects and deserves. And whereas in December 2020, individuals, groups of people, agencies, departments, elected officials, and public servants choose a different path, a path that acknowledges peace, harmony, and human rights for all. In doing so, we vow to engage hate at all levels possible during the year 2021. Human rights and freedom from fear must exist for all people, or they exist for no one. Now therefore be proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby recognizes December 2020 as Human Rights Awareness Month and encourages all residents to educate themselves about the Universal Direct Declaration of Human Rights and the privileges we enjoy in a free society. Human Rights Awareness Month will be the beginning of a continuing effort throughout the coming year, coined the Humble Kindness Campaign. During this time, we advocate for special civic engagement to occur, personal reflection to take place, efforts to educate the public, and a community effort to use kindness instead of hate regardless of personal perceptions and political views. Well, Humboldt County represents a small, mostly rural population center within the framework of our country. We must act in ways big and small to change the climate within our control. Dated today, December 2, 2020, and signed by myself. Next is a report by the annual report by the Public Safety Committee. Could we please have a report from committee member Melissa Lazon?
So go ahead and unmute yourself whenever you're ready, Melissa.
Sorry, I was having an entire conversation with you. It's nice to see your faces. And so I'll just start with, we all know that after the murder of George Floyd, the Public Safety Committee was tasked with police reform, including body worn cameras, reviewing initiatives such as Eight Can't Wait. We were also tasked with the civilian oversight committee or changes and some funding changes, the possibility of creating a more, a better infrastructure for social services here in Arcata. With that, we were also tasked with, we have 12 current goals in our Public Safety Committee work plan, and that is attached to the report if you'd like to look at it. And so number one, we are working on our quick reference guide. I came to you guys November 4, and it is a one-stop shop Quick Reference Guide brochure for our community. When we started the task force, we realized that a lot of people didn't know that you could call the city to fix a light or a curb. So we wanted to make sure, and people also didn't know really who to call in an emergency and when to call 911 and when to call the non-emergency number and what information to have. We also have a lot of information in there with hotlines, especially now this is a challenging time. So our hope is that this, we will revisit the brochure in January. We were told you guys asked for some font changes and maybe a little bit of decluttering. So we're going to do those changes in January, and the hope is that we can get those distributed by the end of January. We also, on a similar vein, we also are working on the safarcata.org website, which will be a a I'm sorry, it'll be an online hub. That was the dream is that it would be an online hub where community members could come in, know where to volunteer, where to get blankets, where to get, you know, where our food pantries are. Also, you know, we'd have the brochure on the website as well. So it would be a digital version of the Quick Reference Guide. And so we're really looking forward to all that that could be. Right now, we're in a pilot stage, and I'm not sure if any of you got a chance to look at it. But if you didn't, I'll make sure you have that information. When we talked about police reform, we started with use of force policies. We recognize that right now are there are national and statewide changes being made. Currently, Lexipol and state agencies have been making so many changes that the policy revision that we saw was changed as early as late as November 3. So we are on in a holding pattern. We know what type of language we would like to add, but we need to wait until those changes come through. We are talking about the Campaign Zero and Eight Can't Wait, as well as the abolish movement that's been happening nationally. And as far as Campaign Zero goes, APD is pretty well in compliance, which is really nice. Our officers are stellar and we appreciate the leadership. One of the things that was recommended in Campaign Zero was an eliminating the broken windows approach. The only issue with that here in our town is those broken window type crimes, those really tiny misdemeanors, those are the bulk of our calls for service. So we are going to continue to look for creative ways to handle that. Basically, when they are asking us to change the broken window policy, it is because in some areas, especially large cities, under socio-economically challenged neighborhoods are getting more policed. And here, those broken window policies are just quality of life. And the committee, and I'm sure the police officers as well from conversations I've had with Brian, are that we're going to use those as an opportunity for creative solutions. So you know, we come in and figure out a way that we can help you versus increasing policing, which is what they were worried about when they asked for elimination. We're going to come in and help. So that was the idea behind that. And I did want to speak for a moment to the defund and abolish concepts that are coming up. So in order to abolish the police, we would have to have a community that was capable of policing itself. And that's not what we have. And we, as a committee, can be committed to getting our community up to speed. We can have training courses like mental, mental health first aid. We can, we can work with our community to get them to that place, but we are definitely not there. And I don't know that we would be in the near future. As far as defund the police, that idea, they have merits within it. But in order to defund the police like they're asking, we would need to recreate an infrastructure for social services that just aren't there right now. So this is going to be a lot of radical work. For these radical ideas come radical work, and we will need a citywide commitment to that work if we're going to make this happen. And I don't feel like we need to defund our police, but I do feel we need to engage our community and work together with our police to have creative problem solving around these issues. We are asking that the city take a deep look into creating social services, either within the police department, and I'm sure there will be a large group that would prefer it to be outside of the police department. But either way, the need for social services in our town has never really been greater. And unfortunately, it's right when we're understaffed. With that, when we first started this committee, when we first started the task force, we put together this idea of a Safe Arcata Plan. And basically, it's a living document. And what we're going to do with the goals that were given to us by the city is we're going to encapsulate some of those goals into the Safe Arcata Plan. Because this will be a living document, we're going to use this document as a template for how to deal with issues in each neighborhood. For example, right now, we're looking at the North Town Footbridge. It's been a historical issue, been a problem for years. We had Dr. Tom Jackson come to the committee in January, seems like forever ago. And who knows if what's changed since then, but there was interest in working together with us for that footbridge on that project. There was even a mention of funding, possible funding. Again, times have changed. We'll have to look into it, but I have been working with Shoshana and Jackie over at the Arcata Playhouse, brainstorming some unique solutions. We are also, Jackie and Shoshana are also both out looking for stakeholders. And we're excited about that. We would like to ask for staff time to help in that coordinated coordination, especially with inter-agency communication, as well as helping us with permits and permissions. Our other goal was to work with the CERT team, the Community Emergency Response Team. And at this time, Judy, who leads this team, she was with us at the conception of the Public Safety Task Force. So I'm really excited to work with her. Right now, their greatest need is they need to be able to provide their community members with basic CERT training. Right now, they have 12 existing projects that they don't have enough people to do. Also, I was told that there were some issues with getting them sworn in, so we can look into that. I'm really looking forward to helping them and partnering with them. I'm sorry, I'm joking around. So we're back to reform. One of the, one of the things that we've been asked to do is to change, to look at alternative staffing positions. Again, this would be either within the police department or separate from the police department. I'm sure, you know, people will go either way. Within the police department has its benefits because there's an infrastructure already built, and we can make changes and modify. One of the ideas was having non-sworn officers who won't carry guns that would have the capacity to help with mental health related issues. One of the other things that we had talked about was working on building that infrastructure, a social services infrastructure that would help deal with our homelessness issue, mental health, and other social issues inside our community. One of the big things that was asked for was our Oversight Committee for police oversight. Right now, we, that's a big topic, and we are exploring all the different models that are available. Some work better in big cities, some will work for us, but we'll have to modify them. The big, the big goal here is that we'll need to have an Oversight Committee that is, that has the power to recommend disciplinary measures and enact policy and trading changes, training changes. So we would like, we would like this committee, this Oversight Committee to have teeth, but we would like to make sure it was reports for us. And I was told to let you all know that the Public Safety Committee members are excited to continue our work for Arcata and look forward to future opportunities to fulfill the council's public safety vision for the city of Arcata. Questions? That's a lot.
Was Jesse going to make any comments? Because he had spoken to us before.
He has, but he had to work. He was working late this evening, unfortunately.
All right, I will now ask for questions from the council, starting with Vice Mayor Patino.
Yeah, Melissa, can I get that link sent to me on the North Town Bridge Environmental safety?
I'll send it to you. It was, it was pretty compelling, like I said.
I've spent some time. Great. Thank you. I've spent some time there working on that bridge and I'd like to see. Maybe it'll show me what I can do better next time.
Yeah, it's really fascinating. A lot of it has to do with some, with lighting.
Yeah.
All right, Paul, any further comments?
Thank you, Melissa.
Thanks, guys.
No.
All right, Councilmember Watson?
I don't have any questions. Thank you very much for all of your work.
Thanks. Oh, and Jesse, Jesse is here.
That was a great presentation, Melissa.
Thanks. Pretty rambly, but I appreciate you guys staying focused with me.
Or is there anything that you wanted to add to the presentation, Jesse?
Though I think she covered most of it. If you guys had any other questions about the website, we're still willing to build those, still in development. I was also thinking of using it as a place to find a way to communicate with different departments regarding concerns if they would pertain to public safety or the environmental department, just another place to find their contact information. Or for us to help direct them to the appropriate place.
Councilmember Pereira.
First of all, Melissa, that was not a rambly report. It was a thorough report, and I really appreciate the thoroughness that the Public Safety Committee, the thoroughness in addressing not only the initial objectives and goals when the committee was formed, but also adapting to additional direction from the council. I really do appreciate the working goals and really outlining and being really frank about what resources are needed to deliver. I think oftentimes, there can be a perception that the council gives direction, and it's just like that there's not like a feedback loop. And so I think it is really important that you give the feedback of, if these are the things that we're going to be working on, here are the resources that we need to do it, and here's how we can prioritize, and really showing who on the committee is taking leadership. I'm just, I think it's a really great model, and I just really appreciate the thoughtfulness that you put into all of the direction that we've given over the years since the inception of the committee, and excited about Safe Arcade and the other work, the tall order that you have ahead, but I know that you're all up to it. So thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Karen, for the goals. That was really a nice, it was really nice. It was really good to have that structure and the framework to move forward. So I appreciate that.
Melissa, it was really good to hear from you personally that I read the report, and there's a lot of, shows there are a lot of work that the committee has done that goes into that. But what you said and the way you phrased it was very helpful to really understand things like what's possible with defund, what's possible with Eight Can't Wait or Campaign Zero, and how those ideas can be adapted to the situation in Arcata. So I found that what you said tonight was extremely helpful and really shows a lot of thought that you've put in, and I'm sure the committee has put in on this.
I would like to say to the people out there who have been talking about defund and abolish that we need the concepts to glean what will work for our town. I don't want them to think that we're going to ignore it, because that's not the case.
Do we have any comments, members of the public who would like to comment on this item?
A reminder to attendees, this is an opportunity for public comment on the Public Safety Committee report. And if you do wish to provide comment, please use the raise your hand function. There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Melissa.
Thank you guys so much for your hard work, and we appreciate all your patience getting to this point. Thank you.
Next is early oral communications. This 15-minute time period is provided for people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. At the conclusion of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Any request that requires council action will be set by the council for future agenda or referred staff. Speakers addressed in the council at this time are limited to two minutes, and we can take up to seven speakers. Please raise your hand if you are on Zoom or press star nine if you're calling by phone and wish to make a comment. Are there any members of the public who indicated that they wish to comment at this time?
There is no public comment at this time.
I will close early oral communications. Next is the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. A, approve the minutes of the City Council meeting of November 18th, 2020. B, bi-weekly report on general warrants. C, declare a continuation of the local emergency related to the coronavirus pandemic. D, adopt resolution number 201-21, authorizing the destruction of certain city records maintained by the city relating to departments of city manager, contracts, and special projects, personnel, community development, environmental services, and finance as permitted under section 34090 of the California Government Code and the Secretary of State's Local Government Records Program. E, adopt resolution number 201-24, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata approving and adopting the amended Joint Powers Authority, JPA, agreement for Rebit Empire Municipal Insurance Fund, REIMF, and the JPA agreement for the California Intergovernmental Risk Authority, CIRA. E, authorize the city manager to submit an application for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for the Arcata wastewater treatment facility levy improvement project with the California Governor's Office of Emergency Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. G, approve a memorandum of understanding, MOU, with the York Indian Housing Authority, number three, LLC, and authorize the city manager to execute necessary documents in a California Environmental Quality Act exemption for the action. H, approve an amended agreement between the City of Arcata and Friends of the Arcata Marsh, extending the term an additional five years to December 31st, 2024, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. I authorize the chief of police to enter into a revised memorandum of understanding, MOU with participating agencies for participation in the Humboldt County Drug Task Force, HCDTF, with an addendum for a connect canine agreement and all successor MOUs requiring city council approval, and authorize the city manager to sign all applicable documents. Is there any member of the council that would like to pull an item?
Yeah, Michael, I'd like to pull seven F.
F?
F.
F.
Thank you.
Is there any member of the public or staff that wants to have an item removed from the consent calendar?
There's no member of the public.
May I have a motion on the consent calendar?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar excluding item F.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. I will call the role on this. Councilmember Watson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pereira?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Patino?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So Paul, go ahead on item F.
Okay, you know, the reason I pulled this is I've been contacted by journalists about dioxin in the bay, dioxin around our plant, and of course, down I and around the boat ramp. There's a lot of places where haven't, places that theoretically haven't been cleaned up yet or that haven't really, that we haven't addressed. And I thought, oh, okay, yeah, I understand that. I said, well, I wonder if that has anything to do with property-wise, location-wise, with what we're doing with the levies? So if we're expanding the footprint in the height and it's in an environment that has a lot of dioxin spots, hotspots or whatever, I think we should have a discussion on, are we covering up spots? Are we working in an area where there are some? And I didn't, I couldn't answer any of that with the timeframe and with the data on this grant proposal. So I thought, well, can I have some input from staff about what is the concern? Is there a dioxin concern working on these levies? Are we gonna make a problem worse? Are we gonna cover up a problem? Or are we not in an area where there is or is not a problem? We know that we have a cleanup scheduled for the north part of the property up by Samoa, but I'm not sure if we have any plan for cleaning up whatever's left over that's not on that parcel. So I guess that's the reason that I brought this up, and I'd like to have some kind of a response.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, city staff, and the members of the public. Before I answer your question, I'll just give you maybe just what this project involves, the grant application, and then on the dioxin portion and the cleanup portion, maybe Mark can give more input on that if he's available as well. And David is also working on some cleanup in the South I Street area, so he might be able to give some input as well. But this grant application is only for the levies around the wastewater treatment plant, which is approximately 1.5 miles, just protecting the wastewater plant that includes the oxidation pond and the critical structure that we have. In the past, we have submitted the grant application for similar or same project, but we were not successful. But we want to protect our wastewater plant because we are making a big investment there. So that's the reason we are submitting this grant application. And I'm glad you pulled this item, because I was going to pull this item as well. The reason for that is last year, we submitted application to Caloos for the same project, and we were not successful. However, last week, we learned that if we increase our match, city match, we may be able to get additional points, which is five points, which is quite a bit of point to get a grant application. So the way the staff report is submitted currently, it has only 25% match. And I can give you the total amount, total cost of the project is in the range of $5.52 million. 25% match would be 1.38 million, and then the grant amount would be 1.14 with 25% match. But we are recommending to maybe increase that match by 1%, which will make it 26% match from the city, and remember, it would be grant. So that amount would be, the total product cost would be the same, but the match amount would be 1.43 million, and then the grant amount would still be $4.08 million. Did I answer your question, Paul, on that? We have done the environmental document for the wastewater project, and we are not aware of any dioxin in that area, and we are moving forward with the project in that area. So if you want more information on that, maybe Mark, you can give more information on, we got clearance from the wastewater resource control board on that area.
Thank you, Natra. Yeah, I'll add a bit to that. Yeah, the levy augmentation is dealing with existing upland structures, and it wouldn't add any material to Humboldt Bay or the bay muds, where we've done limited sampling in the past for our Living Shorelines project. And a composite sample, you know, of a bunch of different samples showed some traces of dioxin, which is likely present in the bay muds of Humboldt Bay, but not in any concentrated known location that would, you know, warrant focused cleanup effort. So this project simply, well, not simply, but raising the existing levy structures so that we're in compliance with FEMA and have a little bit more protection for our treatment facility and ponds, which is built on the existing raised structure fill material that does not have any hazardous materials that we know of in that structure. When we raise that structure, it'll be towards the oxidation pond, not bayward, because we're not going to be filling anything, any fill into a wetland or bay or waters of the US. So this project won't close the door to any, you know, potential for, you know, any dioxin, you know, remediation or abatement that's in the bay. So we don't have great data baywide, but it's a trace element that's found, not trace element, but it's an element that's found in the bay because primarily the teepee burners, the sources all flush through Jolly Creek, James Creek, Jacobi Creek, Freshwater Creek, all the feeder streams to the bay. So it's probably diffused throughout Humboldt Bay to a degree. So this project won't affect that. Our Living Shorelines pilot project, since, you know, we're talking about that, you'll probably hear about that in the spring. Those are just building skeleton structures to try to attract floatable seaweed, vegetation, eelgrass, sediment, to start building up a living shoreline type of structure. And that could start burying the bay mud, and that's the intention there. But even that, those are small, super small pilots. It's not going to, you know, create an irreversible commitment to the site. So I hope that answers the questions, but so far, we haven't, we haven't, and nobody's done, it's very expensive for testing for dioxin, an intensive North Humboldt Bay survey, although we picked it up in off the oxidation ponds five or six years ago, and some samples that we did out in the bay, in the mud.
Well, great. Thank you, Mark. What happened for me is I was approached about dioxin there, and I thought, wow. Unfortunately, it was over the holidays, and I couldn't do any research. And I thought, well, somebody, somebody has to know, you know? And I appreciate that you are able to spell this out to me and the public, because I couldn't, I couldn't answer this. And I thought, well, as long as we are looking at doing something to the levies, it's a good place to bring it up and feel secure about what you're doing is not going to impact the dioxin situation as far as we can tell.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Do we have any other questions or comments from council on this item?
I'll make a motion.
And do we have any comments from the public on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, go ahead.
Make a motion to approve item F from the consent calendar.
Right, we have a motion and a second. I will do this by roll call. Vice Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Pereira?
Aye.
Councilmember Watson?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Next is new business. Item A, introduce ordinance number 1539 in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Arcata, amending section 2703 of Title II Administration, Chapter Six, Emergency Organization and Functions Related to the Frequency of City Council Emergency Proclamation Review. May I have a staff report from City Manager Deemer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As the council, I think, has become pretty acutely aware, the city has a section of our municipal code, it's 2703, that outlines the process by which a city declares a disaster and then has to renew that declaration. And currently, the city's municipal code requires that declaration renewal every 14 days. So over the course of the COVID-19 pandemic, we have scheduled it for each of the council meetings. And on those months where we have a fifth Wednesday in the month, we end up scheduling a special meeting just to continue the renewal. And in a lot of ways, it's been, it's been really practical to have COVID on our agenda, and you will continue to see it multiple times on the agenda as we want to update the council on actions that the city has had to take to respond to the emergency. But the state, at this point, the state code now allows jurisdictions to review and renew those emergency declarations every 60 days and lengthening the time in between those reviews. If there are no additional decisions that are required, the city could save some staff time and some council time associated with that. So the recommendation before you tonight in ordinance number 1539 is to lengthen that time from 14 days to 40 days. This would ensure that that emergency declaration continues to come back before the council once a month. But in those odd months that there are five Wednesdays, it wouldn't have to come back twice in a particular month. So that 40 days. So that 40 days spans the full potential distance between, you know, two council meetings. In concurrent months, if there was five Wednesdays in between. Or a fifth Wednesday in between. So that's the recommendation, but happy to answer any questions. It's a very small modification in the municipal code. That would be by introduction ordinance.
I will now ask for questions from council, starting with Councilmember Pereira.
No question. It seems pretty straightforward. I think it makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Councilmember Watson.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Patina.
No questions. Thanks.
Well, this is not directly having to do with the site, but related to the COVID crisis. A question that I have is that the council adopted a restriction on evictions back at the beginning of this crisis. And then there were various restrictions adopted at the state and federal level. And I have read that some of these restrictions may be expiring. So could you explain what's happening in that regard? And how it would affect our existing ordinance or it would affect renters who are having financial difficulties in Arcata?
Well, I'll open and if our city attorney, Nancy Diamond, maybe can remember some of the dates. Because I don't have them up in front of me, but I would be happy to send out an update to the council this week. And certainly talk about it at our December 16th meeting for the public, if you'd like more of a report. But the city, as you recall, had instituted eviction restricted eviction ordinance. And we renewed it several times, but I believe it was the end of October. Nancy, if you can recall, when the state ended up really preemptively coming in and creating legislation around this to bring us into 2021. And at that point, the city's ordinance expired. So Nancy, if you recall some of those dates better.
Yeah, and yeah, unfortunately, it was a good month ago or longer. I think it was in September, we brought this forward. I think the state actually adopted its bill. In either early September or August. It preamps all of the residential evictions. So we basically had, you know, no need to continue any any further residential restrictions. On evictions, however, it did not preempt the commercial evictions. And so what the council did was extend the commercial convictions, evictions restrictions. To coincide with the new time schedule for the residential. And that, I believe, runs through the end of March 2021 right now. But again, and I think, you know, since this is not the actual agenda item, I think we should probably hold off and bring it back. For either a more detailed conversation, if the council is interested in having that. Or just a follow-up staff report to give you more comprehensive information.
Okay, thank you. I have no comments on the item before us. So any final comments from council or council member who would like to make a motion on this item?
Michael, I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance 1539, ordinance of the City Council of the City of Arcata. Amending section 2703 of Title II Administration, Chapter 6, Emergency Organization and Functions. Related to the frequency of City Council Local Emergency Proclamation Review. Wave reading of the text and consent to read by title only.
Second.
We will need to take public comment on this item, I think, still.
Yes, that's true. So are there any members of the public who indicated that they wanted to comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
We have a motion and a second. I will call, roll on this. Councilmember Pereira. Councilmember Watson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Patina.
Aye.
I vote aye. Next is agenda item B, adopt COVID-19 Business Assistance Job Retention Loan Program Guidelines. May have a staff report, please, from Community Development Director Loya.
Eric, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Before you tonight, resolution 201-23, we're asking you to adopt. This resolution would implement a job retention grant program for existing businesses in the city of Arcata. That's shown in your exhibit one to the resolution as a amendment to the existing CDBG guidelines. Community Development Grant Business Loan Guidelines. The super high level, I just want to touch on what this program does and a little bit how it's different from the existing loan program. So you understand why we're taking this action. First off, the program is really designed so that for every one job, one FTE that is retained, full-time equivalent that is retained. The business can borrow $35,000 as a loan. And if they retain that employee for up to six months, then it converts from a loan to a grant. And so this is a way that we meet the requirements of CDBG for providing funds to for-profit businesses. According to their guidelines, but then instead of burdening the business with a loan at the end of this. They're granted the funds and this will help get them through the winter quarter. Another important aspect I've already alluded to is that this loan converts to a grant. Our typical program doesn't have a granting function. But people are really leery of taking on new debt right now if they're already leveraged. Or they don't know exactly what the future may bring. They don't want to take on debt and have to pay that debt back and not even know, you know, how their business is going to be doing, whether they'll be able to service that debt when the time comes. The loan range for this is slightly different than our typical program as well. We want to try and keep the loans as small as the businesses need to get them through this quarter. Really trying to stretch a finite amount of money that we have. We have about $300,000 for the program. Do as many businesses as we can throughout Arcata. And so we're hoping that they'll come in at $25,000. But we're allowing them to go up to about $140,000 as well. You know, depending on the number of applications we get and what the businesses need the money for. We're expecting that the majority of these funds will go towards operating expenses. And or new equipment that's needed to make the businesses COVID safe. So they can continue to operate, meet the state guidelines. There's not a lot of extra capital floating around right now. And, you know, as we've seen with the DoorDash ordinance that we recently adopted. There's also some businesses out there that are sort of taking advantage of the position that these businesses find themselves in. And so really, the program is designed to help those businesses do the thing that's a little bit extra that they need to do. Maintain that employee through this thin period so that they can keep their doors open and continue to, you know, persist next year. We structured this business loan program slightly differently from the business resiliency loan program that we adopted early this year. That program was really designed to get capital out quickly. I mean, these are areas where, based on some of the economic metrics that we've been looking at at the staff level. We feel like we can have the greatest impact in retaining those businesses. So lastly, I just wanted to point out that this is an amendment to our existing business loan program. We included that existing guidelines as well as exhibit B, or attachment B, rather. And I have one minor amendment that I want to make inside that attachment B as well. But I'll come back to after I've answered your questions and taken any public comment. Before I leave off, I just wanted to acknowledge the contributions of Jennifer Dart, our Deputy Director. And Susan Dill McCarthy, our community development specialist, who helped me bring this to you and to the community today. And already have a number of businesses that, as they've heard rumblings of this, are very excited about the prospective program. So happy to answer any questions you have there. Oh, one last thing. We did go to the Economic Development Committee last night with this. And got a recommendation from them, favorable recommendation to adopt the program from them. So I wanted to pass that on. Hadn't done that before the writing of the staff report. So if you happen to answer any questions you may have, or, you know, take any public comment. And then I do have one minor amendment that I'd like to make in section 4.3.
I will now ask for questions from council, starting with Vice Mayor Patina.
You're good, Paul. We can.
Oh, okay. I couldn't, I couldn't hear anything. The question I have is say, say there's a business that has an entry door. That's a standard, everybody's got to push on it, they got to touch the handles and all that. Could a business apply for this loan grant to put in contactless door opening? You know, as a improvement? Or does it have to be just employees?
No, they can use it for that. That would be a very great use of these funds. Any improvements that they need to make to their facility or their operations that that help them. It's actually really wide open, but we expect a lot of people are going to use it for, like you're suggesting improvements that make them more COVID safe.
Yeah, well, great.
So they absolutely could use it for that purpose.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure because it's the first thing that came to mind is there's lots of places that could use that. Thank you, David.
Yeah.
Councilmember Pereira.
No questions. Thank you. This looks really good.
Councilmember Watson.
I think it sounds great. I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Well, it's certainly important to help keep our businesses alive during this very difficult time that we're all going through some, a lot of people, a lot more so than others. Are there any members of the public who've indicated that they want to comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
So any final comments from council or I would entertain a motion?
I actually do have one small amendment to section 4.3. If I could describe that, it's very, very simple. And it's, it's been, it's brought up because of Marc Andre's soon retirement. His impending retirement has made us realize that we will be down a loan advisory committee member. The guidelines specify the Director of Community Development, the Director of Finance, and the Director of Environmental Services. Are the comprised loan advisory committee. And so in the interim between when we have a new environmental services director. We'd like to add the authority to the city manager to appoint a member. And so I would suggest on packet page 218, under section four, right after the sentence that describes the loan advisory committee. That we add the following. The city manager may appoint a confidential management or mid-management city employee. In the event of a vacancy in a named position. That way it authorized city manager to, you know, if you have a vacancy in one of those three named positions. To ensure that there's a, you know, someone who has, you know, a position that is, you know, confidential nature.
Okay.
All right, so.
If you want to say as amended, and I'll give Bridget the text for that, or answer any questions you might have about that.
Once again, any comments from the public on this?
There is no public comment.
All right, so I would, any questions from council or I would entertain a motion on this?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to, go ahead. Go ahead, Sophia.
Okay. I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 201-23. A resolution of the Arcata City Council adopting COVID-19 Business Assistance Job Retention Loan Program Guidelines. As an addendum to existing business loan program guidelines as amended.
Second. We have a motion and a second. I'll do this by roll call. Councilmember Watson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Patina. Sorry. I didn't hear that.
Paul, can we get you to unmute again and say aye?
I'm saying, yeah, I said aye. We've got a time lag here, so. Timer sound like, but I said aye.
Perfect.
First, thank you. Councilmember Pereira.
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you.
So thank you. That's all on this item. Next is item C. Suggestion to appoint a council member to serve as acting mayor for times when the mayor and vice mayor are not available during the time period between December 2nd. And the election of a new mayor, which would occur on December 10th. They have a staff report from City Manager Deemer.
Yeah, this item was placed on just for the mayor. In the council's protocol manual, you have a provision that the mayor can basically appoint somebody to act as acting mayor. In any instance where the mayor and the vice mayor are not available to do that. So with the understanding that there might be a few critical minutes in there where that designation would be helpful in the next few weeks. This would just be an appointment by the mayor. It doesn't actually require a motion of the council. Would just be a declaration of the mayor that we would be providing at this meeting.
Right. Do we have any questions or comments from council on this, starting with Councilmember Watson?
No, this is just something that I, that I kind of asked for, just recognizing that there might be a brief period of time during our meeting on the 10th. Where there won't be anybody running the meeting and I just thought it'd be good to have somebody designated.
Vice Mayor Patina.
No questions. Thank you.
And Councilmember Pereira.
No questions. Thanks.
Are there any members of the public who've indicated they want to come in on this item?
This is a reminder for attendees tonight that if you want to provide public comment on any of the items. If you're logged on to Zoom, to please click the raise your hand. Or if you are on by phone, to please press star nine to raise your hand. Is there any public comment for this particular item? There is no public comment for this item.
Right. Next is oral and written communications. This time is provided for people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. Please raise your hand if you were on Zoom webinar or press star nine. Now, if you are on a phone line and you would like to make a public comment. Speakers are limited to two minutes. When it is your time for public comment, the clerk will unmute you and invite you to speak. Do we have any members of the public who want to comment at this time?
Did you appoint somebody, Michael? And I just missed it?
Apparently you folks have, I don't know, seven or nine trailers that were sent up here by the governor or something. I don't know, COVID related or something sitting around. And, you know, it's something that I felt for a long time. That, you know, you folks really need to develop some of your sites to have the infrastructure in place to receive those gifts. In other words, if we had a major catastrophe and you had to house 100 people. You should have some places out of the tsunami zone where you have the ability to install FEMA trailers or anything else. So I highly recommend that you're not in the position you're in right now, which my understanding is they're just sitting there. I don't know if there is a commitment to abuse them. Hopefully, my understanding is maybe they'll be used in the relatively near future. But not just one site. I highly recommend that you have preparedness out there. And you develop some of your potential parcels, even if it's for an interim use, to be able to use for that purpose. That's the comment I wanted. And then I just wanted to make sure there's all kinds of things happening out there with money. Always cross your t's and dot your i's, get all the free stuff you can. And don't ever miss out on those kind of things because it's really important. I've noticed the county, in my opinion, has not really gotten some of the stuff they could to enable this COVID thing to go through. And you don't want to be in the same position of them where you can't get the stuff you can get. So that's just a. where you, you can't get the stuff you can get. So that's just a little bit of trying to learn from other people's failure in some of those departments. Lastly, I would like to say, I really feel sorry for Auditor Controller, who in my opinion is, has been persecuted by the Board of Supervisors. I think Karen Posz has deserved all of our support out there. So thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that have indicated they want, want to speak during this time period?
There is no more public comment on this item.
Uh, next is council and staff reports that, uh, City Manager Deemer has suggested that we change the order of of staff reports during this period if a member of the council would like to make a motion to that effect.
And the recommendation was.
Yeah, Michael. Yeah, I, I'll make a motion to reverse the order of item A and item B and say, take item B first, which is, uh, the Environmental Services Director Andre's report. And then item A after that, which would be the Forest Committee's report. Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we need that public comment on this, on this motion?
Uh, there appears to be no public comment.
All right, so I, I will do a roll call on this, on the motion to change the order of the agenda for staff reports. Uh, Councilmember Watson.
Aye.
Uh, Councilmember Pereira.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Patina.
Aye.
I vote aye. And so what we, next, we will, is we'll go to item B and receive a report from Environmental Services Director Andre on staff and the Energy Committee's research regarding electric energy reach code options.
I think Director Andre was gonna open us, but if you want to queue up Emily, your presentation, why don't you go ahead and do that?
Sure. So, um, Karen, I can jump right into my presentation, or we can give Mark another minute or two. Mine's all verbal to begin with, so I'm ready when you all are.
You, go ahead and start.
Okay, sure. Good evening, councilmembers. So on November eighteenth, the City Council made a motion, which I'll read here now, just for continuity's sake, which was the council directed the Energy Committee, given that they had already given a recommendation for electric preferred, to evaluate their recommendation and compare it to an all-electric reach code and natural gas band and compare them to the alternative to require electric space and water heating only so that it has been fully vetted by the Energy Committee. On November thirtieth, the Energy Committee met to fulfill the objectives of this motion. Um, I'm, I'd additionally like to provide some background on the context of the work that the Energy Committee had done to date in the context of the council goal for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year, Arcata's All Electric Energy Initiative. That goal stated, um, one, two, three, four, six different parts. Um, one was to work with the Energy Committee to review options for moratorium on installation of new or replacement natural gas appliances in city facilities. B, develop strategies to require and/or incentivize private development to utilize all-electric construction. C, develop a fifteen-year plan to phase out natural gas citywide. D, develop electric fleet conversion plan, review each new purchase for electric option. E, review forty-seven hundred West End Road and the library for potential solar installation, and finally, F, update the greenhouse gas reduction plan metric goals. So, the reach code portion was considered as a first step for items B and C of the overall Arcata's All Electric Initiative, which is a similar first step that many, many other communities in California have done. Based on the direction of City Council on the November eighteenth meeting, the analysis that I'll shortly jump into and provide was developed with a huge help from the consultant Misty Bersari and her team. So I first want to acknowledge that without, without her assistance, we, we would have had a much harder time developing this analysis. So huge thank you, Misty. And her and her team developed a report for city staff titled Twenty Nineteen All-Electric Building Requirements: A Review of Ordinances in California, which outlined a number of communities in California who are moving toward electrification and also provided an analysis on options that council was interested in having analyzed. I'd be happy to provide council members with a copy of the report after this meeting. We got it in the eleventh hour, so it hasn't been included in your packet. Um. Within that report, though, I want to focus on the four alternatives that council had directed staff and the Energy Committee to look into. And those four main alternatives were the electric preferred reach code, the all-electric reach code, and all-electric ordinance, which would take the form of, of the Public Health and Safety Code, for example, though there are other avenues to go through, as well as the all-electric water and space heating only option. So first, with regard to these analyses, both the all-electric reach code and the all-electric ordinance, public health and safety options, were considered together as they really result in the same cost savings and greenhouse gas emissions reductions. So they, essentially, the function of the all-electric reach code and the all-electric ordinance is the same. The mechanisms are just different. So for the purposes of this analysis, they're combined. Um, the all-electric water and space heating only option was not analyzed in greater detail because there aren't the upfront cost savings that individuals would see associated with foregoing development of natural gas infrastructure. And furthermore, the cost of installing that infrastructure ends up essentially being spread out across the ratepayers with a very, very little, or I should say, no payback time. So, so parsing out a prohibition of electric space heating and water heating essentially results in a sunk investment. And this is something that PG&E has provided letters of support to communities expressing their interest in rather than going through a partial ban and really going, going the whole, whole regard. Um, and Misty can provide some additional detail on this shortly, but I wanted to preface the, process the analysis with that. Another thing to look for initially is that in the, in the analysis and the comparison table, you'll see that there's a range of three different electric preferred options, um, as well as the one all-electric option. And I want to point out that there's nuances in the relationship between the cost effectiveness of the different electric preferred options, which really depends on the type of electric preferred reach code that's adopted. So in other words, the specific reach code impacts the, the cost effectiveness and how far the reach codes reach, so to speak. Um, and so we chose three scenarios within that to help present a representation of the different trade-offs across a really broad spectrum of possible options. Um, and so now I'll turn it over to Misty to provide additional detail on the various alternatives, and I believe she can share the screen. But if not, I have her reports on my screen as well, and I would be happy to do that for her.
She's on it. Nicely done, Misty.
Uh, Misty, good to see you again. I mean, we've known each other for thirty years or something like that.
Indeed, Mayor. Good evening, and wonderful to see you too. Good evening to you and to all the other council members as well. Uh, thank you for having me here tonight. Uh, can you see my screen okay?
Yes.
Okay, fabulous. Um, as Emily stated, I'm, my name is Misty Bersari, and I'm here today on behalf of the statewide Codes and Standards Reach Codes Program. Um, although it has been me working with Emily, I, I must say that the credit ultimately goes to PG&E for funding all of these activities. So, thank you PG&E for your insight in, in funding these activities for many, many years now. So I've been working with staff, with Emily and Julie and Mark to create a comparison of the different structures so that, that, that the city is considering, so that we can provide additional information regarding the potential cost savings and the emissions reductions resulting from each option. But before I go into that, I thought I would just present a very, very quick kind of a state of the state with respect to local ordinances. Um, at this time, approximately forty jurisdictions have adopted some sort of electric electrification-related ordinance. Right now, the most popular of the three typical structures is the all-electric reach code with twenty-six jurisdictions electing that option. Of the ten that have adopted the electric preferred structure, the majority of those are independent. Uh, but there are a few of them that actually are work, have been adopted to work in concert with an all-electric requirement. So that last structure can go either way, which is why you don't see things add up to forty here. Uh, in case you were wondering here. Um, the ordinance all have a pretty wide range of exceptions for specific occupancy types such as perhaps ADUs or other critical facilities, um, as well as for various end uses such as commercial kitchens. Uh, it appears that that list of exemptions is, is constantly evolving as, as each new jurisdiction leverages the experience gained from others. And so it, it appears to be narrowing as we move forward. Um, and in addition to that, although many more jurisdictions have actually adopted the all-electric, all-electric reach code, um, there appears to be a trend, a growing trend of moving toward all-electric ordinances or gas bans or moratoriums, however you'd like to structure that. Uh, this actually was a very busy week in this, in this field, both the, well, the city of Oakland adopted an all-electric ordinance last night, and the city of San Jose expanded their all-electric ordinances also. So we've had quite a bit of activity just recently. Uh, in both cases, those are the municipal ordinance. It's not a reach code. Okay. So the Reach Codes team created a summary document and this table to compare the impacts of the different electric preferred, preferred options and the full electrification option. Um, this slide shows scenarios for single-family, low-rise, single-family occupancies, which I will walk through in detail, but I wanted to note that we also have similar, similar data for both low-rise multifamily, mid-rise multifamily, as well as medium office and medium retail occupancies. So the table contains three main sections. As you can see here, the first section is a description of the policy and the scope of the ordinance. The second includes the performance and cost effectiveness requirements and data. And finally, on the right, the potential impacts from the ordinance, including cost savings and the emissions reductions resulting from the various scenarios. I just want to note at this time, before we start getting into detail, that these numbers represent one option, and it's based on the cost-effective analysis, which was done for the purpose of meeting the legal requirements for ordinance adoption. Uh, the reason I stress that is that the designs and the packages that are included in that analysis again are, are structured towards a legal requirement. They do not represent design best practices. And they're not intended to. Uh, and so in some cases, they don't really even represent some of the typical measures that are installed uh, because we can't use them for that purpose. Uh, there's a lot of nuances there, but I did want to just at least point that out that these, while you see this data, there are other variations that could change that. So these are estimates, and there are a lot of assumptions behind them that impact these results. It, it, the structure that's shown here is not the only way this can be done. It's just one data point. Okay, so looking at the table a little bit more closely, uh, the first section, as I said, describes the policy scope and scenario. So in this first case, we're looking at low-rise, single-family occupancies. And we have four different scenarios. As Emily mentioned, we have three scenarios for the electric preferred structure of a low, medium, and high conversion. Basically, we've, we've assumed that approximately five percent of, of current new construction is already all-electric. And that in the low scenario, it shifts to up to fifteen percent. In the medium, up to fifty, and then in the high scenario, up to seventy-five. The final row is the electrification scenario. And that, of course, would shift all mixed fuel to one hundred percent all-electric.
Misty?
Yes.
Uh, this is Jim. I, I just wanted to know if you would clarify, because this is my understanding, and I want to make sure I'm understanding correctly, and I think in case others have this question. But so the three electric preferred scenarios that you show, the low, medium, and high, those are not intended to be different electric preferred reach codes or programs. Those are for an electric preferred reach code. Once it's implemented, we don't know how, um, the bill, the people building within the city are going to respond to that electric reach code. And so these are estimates of how many people, because of this electric reach code, may go all-electric, even though the mixed fuel is an option for them. And in the low case, it's fifteen, it goes from five percent to fifteen percent. In the medium case, it goes from five all the way up to fifty percent. And in the preferred high case, it goes from five to seventy-five. But we don't know if we do electric preferred, it, it could be anywhere in that range. And, and so you're just looking at, at different possibilities. Is that, is that a correct understanding?
Absolutely correct. Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate that.
Great, thanks.
Those are actually the, the outcomes, rather than different ordinances. Okay. So, um, lastly here, for all of the residential occupancies, we have used a unit of one hundred dwelling units. Basically, to make it easy for you to scale that up and down, if you'd like to, to do some analysis going forward. Okay, so the second section in the spreadsheet here includes the performance requirements for both mixed fuel and all-electric designs, as well as the cost effectiveness ratios. Okay. Um, in this case, looking at the mixed fuel designs, they must improve their energy efficiency performance beyond the base code. Um, all-electric designs have to meet the, the base code. They must comply with the state code and then install some additional PV. Okay, the bottom row here of the mixed fuel column says NA, because there are no mixed fuel homes in that all-electric scenario. Okay. So cost effectiveness can be measured using different metrics. We've calculated it here as a benefit to cost ratio. And we've used two different metrics. The first is called time-dependent valuation, or TDB. That metric is the metric used to determine compliance with the energy code. The TDB metric assigns a value to energy based on the time, the day, or the season. I should say, and the season. Um, essentially, energy that is used or saved during peak times is more expensive to provide than energy off-peak. And conversely, saving that energy during the peak time is more valuable. Uh, so TDB reflects those changes and, and offers what is effectively a societal perspective on the cost to supply energy across the whole year. Okay, um, the second metric we use was more of an individual customer's perspective. We've termed it as on-bill. Um, and that basically means that we've used the individual customers' utility bills over the, or what we anticipate those bills will be based on the tariffs over the thirty-year lifecycle period. So that's more of an individual customer's experience and what they might see. Okay. And the last section shows the combined cost savings and emission reductions for each scenario. Sometimes these numbers are, are not incredibly intuitive because there are a couple of different moving, moving parts. And so in this case, for single-family, because mixed fuel is required to exceed the code, there's an incremental cost above and beyond compliance. Okay, uh, for an all-electric design, there are actually cost savings. And so when we start shifting the percentages, the numbers change a little bit differently. And what you'll see is the compliance cost decreases as more homes shift to all-electric. Okay. Also, as more homes make that shift, the savings on bills are reduced. In this case, somewhat dramatically. Um, as I've noted, this is just. As I've noted, this is just one configuration. By adjusting the requirements just a little bit on either or both sides of that equation, we can change the impacts pretty dramatically. But what we notice is that in all cases, as one moves from mixed fuel to more all-electric homes, the emissions reductions increase. And we see that throughout the the spreadsheet. Okay, are there any questions on the on the spreadsheet at this point? On the table?
Oh, one comment I have, Misty, is that difference between a reach code and ordinance is that the reach code expires when the next cycle of the state energy code goes into effect, which in this case would be in twenty twenty-three, where an ordinance would last until it's modified by the governing entity, which here in Arcata would be the Arcata City Council.
Right, provided that that ordinance doesn't modify the the state building code, provided that you modify the municipal code or a different code, health and safety, or something like that. If you modify the building code, you have to re-adopt each time. The other difference between them, too, is that a reach code typically has to be, it's required that it be cost-effective, reduce the energy use, be below the state code requirement, and also that you not preempt any federal government requirements. That actually holds for both. You have to go through a CEC approval process for a reach code as well. Is there someone going to ask a question? Okay, I thought I heard one. So I'm gonna go ahead and and move on to the next section in the table here. And this this shows, the slide provides an example of how relatively small changes can can really impact the results. What you see here are two sets of the same scenario, the same four scenarios, for low-rise multifamily buildings. In this case, it's a small eight-unit apartment building. We're still have the same one hundred unit, excuse me, one hundred dwelling unit. Everything in this table is the same, except for the requirement for the all-electric design. For low-rise multifamily, we note that the cost effectiveness here is is right on the edge. And that requirement is to just simply comply. There's no extended requirement beyond complying with the code. The second set requires that homeowners add capacity to the PV system that's required by code. This is a little bit of a nuance, but the way that the code works, if you have an all-electric home, the code does not require you to offset all of your electricity usage. It only requires that you offset an equivalent amount of usage as if you'd had a mixed-fuel home. So it winds up being somewhere between about forty to fifty percent of an all-electric homes usage. So adding this additional capacity still doesn't even offset the entire load, but it does offset a greater percentage, which honestly is probably more typical of what somebody might do if they built an all-electric home. What you can see, though, is that there's a tremendous difference in the numbers here, at least in the compliance cost and the bill savings. In the second set, the compliance cost increases. And that's because you've required that the homeowners increase the size of the PV system. The lifecycle bill savings still decreases, but by a much smaller percentage here. In the second case, you've only see a difference of about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars versus nearly five hundred thousand dollars difference as you move through these two, these scenarios. So it is a quite a big difference. And in addition, you get a little bit more PV, or a little bit more emissions savings in the second scenario. What you do see is a huge difference in the cost and lifecycle bill savings, though.
Misty, this is Jim again. I have another question.
Okay. Go ahead.
So the 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 two, the two groupings there that you have for low-rise multifamily, the electrification, that's simple electrification, which you say is barely cost-effective at the at one point zero one, and then the electrification plus neutral cost PV, so where the where they're adding some additional PV beyond what's required by the existing code. And I see that that that, you know, as you've described, that that actually improves the economics of that of that scenario. I guess, I guess my question is, if if there were, if the if the city of Arcata were to adopt an all-electric reach code or 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 the the natural gas ban, which is effectively the same thing in terms of the results of what we're seeing here, then that that would be the requirement, is that buildings have to be all-electric. And if we if we did that, and we didn't require additional PV, or we didn't require anything beyond that, we just said they have to be all-electric, that doesn't preclude from anybody adding additional PV. So I I guess my my point here is that we don't necessarily need to adopt a reach code that says electrification plus neutral cost PV. We could do that. And maybe that would actually be beneficial for people. And at least in these comparison of these two scenarios, that would be beneficial probably to whoever the builder is or the ends up being, or yeah, the building owner, the builder. But just requiring the electrification, the builder can choose to do, they could, they go with total PV, and that might might improve things even more, or maybe not, I don't know. But I guess I'm just saying that we don't have to, it doesn't have to be in the ordinance or in the reach code in order to improve the economics. It's just, you know, you're showing that that could be, it easily could be done as a choice by the builder. Not sure if I'm how clear I'm making that, but I just wanted to clarify that, if that's right.
You're absolutely right. It would not preclude anyone from installing a larger system. As a matter of fact, I think most people probably would. Like I said, the the system that's required by code only offsets about half the electricity usage. So I think a lot of people would want to offset a higher percentage of their usage. Typically, you're looking for a higher percentage when you install a system like that. So that would not preclude anyone from doing it. If you had it in the ordinance, you would guarantee that they did it, and you would guarantee that you got the the additional savings here in the second scenario. But it is not required. And you still may pick it up anyway. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
Okay, fabulous. I wanted to point out one number here that is kind of a little bit odd, and and so I wanted to just address that if possible. And that is the number here. That is the on-bill cost-effectiveness in the second scenario, set of scenarios here for the all-electric design. It's showing as a kind of a nothing. And and the reason for that is this scenario requires the person to invest the savings from the gas in from not having to install gas infrastructure into the PV system. So it results in a zero incremental cost. And when calculating a benefit-to-cost ratio, that would result in zero in the denominator, which doesn't really work rationally, anyway. So that is the reason that we have this here. It's not that it's not cost-effective, it is a cost-effective solution. If you have no incremental initial cost, and you have positive energy savings, it's a cost-effective solution. We just can't calculate it calculate it using the typical ratio.
Well, at this point, I'd like to ask if there are any members of council who have questions at this point.
No questions, Michael.
Okay. Fabulous. Go ahead and respond to it. Yeah.
Well, I I wanted to clear, I'll go back to, let's see, we're back on here. Okay. One thing I wanted to understand, so this is for a hundred homes. And so if the compliance cost is thirty-five thousand dollars, is this per home, or is this for a hundred homes?
One hundred homes. And the reason there is a cost there, it it's a little bit anti-intuitive, because you see the zero incremental cost, right? You would expect these costs to be zero. The reason for that is that we assumed that fifteen percent of all the multifamily, low-rise multifamily buildings are already being all built all-electric. So we did not take the savings from the gas infrastructure for that first fifteen percent, which is why you see the cost there.
So the thirty-five thousand dollars divided by a hundred would be a compliance cost of three hundred fifty dollars per home, then, in that case.
Right. And in in this case, per dwelling unit in in a multifamily.
Right. And then the life cycle bills savings or cost in this case would be fifteen thousand divided by by a hundred, which is a hundred fifty dollars, which is in the cost of building a dwelling unit, that's a tiny amount of money.
Right, especially over a thirty-year period.
Yeah. And and so this, so so over the a thirty-year period, you you've got a thirty-year period of a hundred fifty dollars, which is essentially nothing. And you've got maximum greenhouse gas reduction benefit, which seems to be, to me, would be extremely appealing.
Indeed.
Compared with
I think we were going in the same place. Go ahead.
With gas preferred, where there would, where it would be smaller savings, but there also would be smaller greenhouse gas production. So we're we have the opportunity of of being able to save a large amount of greenhouse gas emissions and and that very low thirty-year cost is what it looks like from from your numbers.
Exactly. It's a low incremental cost in the beginning, and then it's it is cost-effective for the homeowner to to add that PV. There are certainly a lot of opportunities here. Okay, and across the board, every time as we move to more electrification, we increase the emission saving.
Right. And then in my private consulting business, we've been doing this for the last ten years, and we've done that on like two hundred large housing projects, and the developers are are all happy and find that it's very profitable from do that. So I have a lot of personal experience with the cost-effectiveness of doing this in multifamily.
Fabulous. I I've seen some of your case studies, actually. They're wonderful. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and move to the next one. We did three additional occupancy types. We did the same analyses essentially, but one for mid-rise multifamily, one for medium office, and one for medium retail. You'll note the same trends as you move through the four scenarios, the compliance cost decreases, savings decreases, and emissions increase. One thing I'd like to note is that we did not try to harmonize the units for this between residential and non-residential buildings. We we didn't have time to come up with the right number here. So the non-residential units are one hundred thousand square feet. Again, we chose that number because it's easy to scale up and down. But you cannot directly compare these impacts because of the differences in the units. So I just wanted to make that that point. Please don't compare them. Compare within non-res or within res, but not against each other in this in this analysis. Okay. Well, that concludes my presentation. Thank you very much.
So if there are any comments from council at this time, I would like to open this up to public comments. So if there are any members of the public who would like to speak on this item, we have instructions which I which staff can read.
This would be the opportunity for public attendees to comment on this item. If you wish, please press the raise your hand option. If you're on the phone, please press star nine. Looks like we do have one public comment. It is screen name Kelly. Kelly, you will have two minutes. If you should be unmuted, if you want to go ahead and start, please.
Yes, this is Kelly Cunningham from PG&E Team Codes and Standards. We supported the presentation that Misty just put together, and I wanted to reiterate that PG&E welcomes the opportunity to avoid avoid investments and new gas infrastructure that might later prove underutilized as cities like Arcata and the state work to realize their long-term decarbonization objectives. So we support, PG&E supports local government policy that promotes all-electric new construction when cost-effective, and limiting the expansion of existing gas system is important for energy affordability and equity on the path to a low-carbon future. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on this item? No more public comment, mayor.
Right, so since this is a staff report, is there an opportunity for members of council to give direction to staff for further research or on this item or in going ahead and drafting an ordinance?
Our particular resolution associated with our council meetings does not allow that type of deliberation on a staff report. This came on a staff report just because the Energy Committee had only met on one Monday, and we want to just at least make sure that you had an update for it.
Right, so any any further comments from council at this time? Well, you know, it's obvious where I stand on this, that I want to eliminate natural gas. I think it's a a fuel whose time has come and gone, and PG&E really is very willing to work with jurisdictions to not have any more natural gas in in new construction. So we will close this section. And Misty, thank you very much for your very in-depth presentation. And thank to the to the person from PG&E, and also I appreciate PG&E's support in in going in this direction in their service service territory.
Thanks for having me.
All right, next is receive a presentation. Overview of draft community forest management plan update and amendments.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Sorry, a moment, a while ago, I had a technical difficulty. My computer tipped over, and my little wireless mouse controller locked up. So the plan was to hand it off to Emily Bendy anyway, so it worked out well. So apologies for that, though I couldn't unmute. Yeah, for tonight, I just wanted to give us a staff overview of the the stat, status of the forest management plan update. Staff and Forest Management Committee primarily have been working on updated and amended Forest Management Plan. We have a very good management plan from nineteen ninety-four, served the city well. But we are updating it for a few reasons, which which should happen on, you know, ten to fifteen-year cycle, anyway. Some of the main drivers for for why we're updating it now include some significant additions to the forest area, actually doubling of the size a little bit more than double. We have some new conservation easements where we post trail use and manage it north of the community forest, the Samuel's Conservation Easement. That's a, that's a new thing to bring into the forest plan. Some land-based allocations of refined techniques, methodologies, and and some amendments to some of the standards and guidelines. I'm not going to go over all those. I'm going to mostly high level, just kind of give you an update. And then I have a short PowerPoint that kind of hits on some of the the themes in terms of the goals and the mission. And what's what we're bringing over from the nineteen ninety-four plan. So, you know, the plan is designed to be somewhat flexible for management and adaptive to provide for the protection and use of the forest resources, address local, regional issues, concerns, fulfilling our legislative requirements. It's still, the direction is to fundamentally restore and move what was an uneven-aged forest to a more structurally complex forest. And to keep moving the forest towards the development of late seral or old-growth forest characteristics. This plan also, you know, provides guidance for multi-resource management for forest managers, for the public, for the city council. And it refers to and and should be interpreted in context with the city's general plan, Parks and Recreation Master Plan, Open Space Master Plan, the bike and pedestrian Parks and Recreation Master Plan, Open Space Master Plan, the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan, and the Arcata Municipal Code. So tangible outcomes of the current management and future management will continue to foster and accelerate transition to an old stand structure, older forest structure through selective planning. Obtaining support from the community for management that includes timber harvests, sometimes in close proximity to residential areas and recreational use areas. Protecting, enhancing biological diversity and rare species, including maintenance of northern spotted owl nesting sites that we've had since nineteen eighty-seven that we've known about. Contributing to the local economy by providing a source of wood products and jobs in the woods. Providing an opportunity for the residents to be involved in forest planning, as well as on-the-ground activities we conduct for that. So I'm gonna switch real quick here and share the screen. And sharing, right? So a quick, quick overview. Community Forest is three tracks, Jacoby Creek Track, Sunny Brae Track, and the Arcata Community Forest Track now totals twenty-four hundred and forty-five acres. There are four hydrologic units that we work with, and that doesn't really matter much for now, but we do our cumulative effects analysis and with other projects within these subwatersheds in terms of, you know, keeping track of what else is going on in these watersheds, so that our activities are viewed in context with other projects that we, you know, might find out about or other timber harvesting in these watersheds, or managing for cumulative effects minimization. And we do have three carbon projects. That's a new feature to bring into this forest plan. It's about seven hundred and seventy-five acres. And those, those have their own constraints, and we are re-inventorying them now. So, you know, that's articulated and updated and amended plan. Some strategies, like in Jacoby Creek, this Jacoby Creek Conservation Strategy, and you can see all the logos up there of participating agencies and NGOs that are working with the city in a large landscape pet conservation strategy. In terms of the organization of the plan, it's the same structure of the ninety-four plan. It really, really has served us well. So we have the introduction, summary of the management situation, management direction, monitoring, evaluation, and then our references and maps and appendixes. This is one of the drivers for why we need to update this plan. These are acquisitions since two thousand and one. I won't read them all, but you can see that there's been several, and none of these properties listed here are yet within our non-industrial timber management plan, but we have amendments in process. We call them substantial deviations for forest practice rule term for bringing those into the the non-industrial timber management plan, which is also, you know, referred by reference in this general forest plan that we're updating. A little bit about the history, nineteen thirty-five, Union Water Company. The old Arcata Community Forest got transferred to the city. Jacoby Creek Forest was purchased for eighteen thousand dollars nineteen forty-two. First community forest in California, or seventy-nine ballot measure, which we still adhere to that nineteen seventy-nine ballot measure in terms of the goals that are in that and the purpose of the management. Nineteen eighty-four management plan paid off the park bond. Ninety-four management plan update. And then those acquisitions and carbon projects I mentioned, and then twenty twenty, we're finally updating the ninety-four plan, since we think there's no real acquisitions that I can think of that are gonna occur. So things have settled a bit, so we can finally, you know, get the plan out and approved. So here are the goals, the overarching goals, maintain the health of the forest system, specifically watershed wildlife fisheries and plant resources, the relationships and processes which they interact with their environment, produce marketable forest products and income to the city, balancing harvest and growth, manage for forest recreational opportunities. And the city forest shall serve as models of managed redwood forests for demonstration and educational purposes. Some additional vision and mission statements that came up through some of the public scoping with the Forest Committee. These are, these are new additions. Kind of wordy, I should just hit them real quickly, but I'll let you read them. Biological, physical elements of the forest, wildlife, aquatic and plants, species, plant and animal communities, and watershed processes are maintained, or stewardship, including timber harvest maintains forest integrity while generating public benefits, or stewardship is fully supported by the community. Community and visitors enjoy a forest setting and recreate in a respectful manner. Public land ownership extends to include watersheds, headwater areas, as well as corridors to neighboring communities. Forest serves as an outdoor laboratory for local schools, university, where research and other academic studies are fostered. And the city's forests continue to serve as a model nationally and internationally of managed redwood. So some of these, you know, expand a bit on the, the other goals I just mentioned. You know, our influences for the city's forest plan date back to seventy-nine, when the voters then voted for a parkland bond and and codified that the forest needed to be managed under the principles of ecological forestry. Nobody knew what that was then. We may think we know what it is now, but it's an evolving thing that we're always challenged with defining what ecological forestry is. The ninety-four plan, you know, when I spent time putting that together, I was greatly influenced by the Northwest Forest Plan. Forest Service BLM, Pacific Northwest, went to some conferences up there in Portland with Dale Thornburg, Dr. Thornburg, Tim McKay, and others. I mean, that was, that was, that was the whole survey and manage ecosystem management kind of was born at that time, and that influenced our our forestry, influenced our ninety-four plan, and it still resonates to what the management looks like on the ground and the current plan update. So heavily influenced by that. Forest Stewardship Council, you know, recognized this forest, and it's one of a few in the nation that's, that has a that, one of the few I should say municipal forests that have that certification. And the Guild Model Forest, there's about a dozen of those in the United States that have achieved that model for status, and we do get visitors for that reason from all over the country. In ninety-four, we didn't have this definition in our forest plan, but, you know, it's one that we've kind of taken on through interaction with the public and the council. And really, it's, it's, it's based on three things, integrating ecological, social, and economic strategies. And the community-based approaches that give the residents both the opportunity and the responsibility to manage their natural resources effectively and enjoy the benefits of that responsibility. So that's kind of how our staff are defining community-based forestry, and we have that entrained in the management plan right now. The plan also, you know, discusses, you know, timber harvest activity through the decades. It shows some of our strategies to do what I said before, increase the stand complex, ecological complexity and grow older stand structure. These are some of the, some of the objectives and techniques the city might, might do or has been doing to do that. And then, of course, what matters the most is how it's expressed on the ground and, and the monitoring and the feedback loops that hopefully give the city the information it needs to make adjustments and to make sure the program is heading in the right direction and that the public is in support of it. You know, there's an old growth forest. That's, that's, that's our kind of benchmark or blueprint for contrasting and comparing our kid for us now and then. Forest Management Committee will probably get one more look at this, this plan. That's them in the field there. And we are also expressing how, you know, every timber harvest is an opportunity to deal with a legacy erosion issue. This is a road decommissioning. It was a project done with its own sequel analysis on the Sunny Brae Track in twenty-eleven, just as an example of a watershed restoration activity. So, you know, wildlife habitat is still driving the civil cultural treatments out there with the goal of, you know, older stand structure that benefits certain, certain species more northern spotted owl and fisher. And hugely important is our cadre of volunteers and the recreational users up there who who embrace this community forest every day. And certainly want to make sure that they understand the management direction. That can be expressed at forest committee meetings. It can be expressed by field trips, but the plan is written in a way that it's, we hope it's understandable and that it's, that it's able to be changed, you know, and amended over time. So we plan to circulate this for public review, along with the environmental document. It'll come back to the council. We're not sure yet how long. It could be for ninety days or so, so there may be some more public comment. And then you would approve and certify it in twenty twenty-one, so. So the draft is expected to be circulated this month, later this month. But I just want to give you notice. It's a council goal. It has been for a while to, to bring this to, to update this management plan. So that's that's something we wanted to deliver in this fiscal year. So if there's any questions, I will be happy to answer them.
All right, so I will start with Vice Mayor Patina.
Yeah, Mark, I just wanted to say that, you know, when I look at page two forty-three and I look at the timber harvest by year, I'm really pleased to see that for like the last twenty years or so, we've been real conservative in our cutting compared to nineteen eighty to nineteen ninety. And I think in the long run, it's probably the best thing that we could be doing is cut it less, save for the future.
Yeah, that was a period of time where there was an annual bond payment for that parkland bond, and there was a lot of pressure to pay that bond, that high interest bond. And it was a time when timber, the timber market was not great, so it was since that got retired early nineteen ninety-one, it was supposed to be another nine more years, but we with the council at the time chose to deviate from a sustainable deal temporarily, barely, and then rest the forest to make up for it. But it, it saved hundreds of thousands of dollars in interest alone by making that decision.
Paul, any further comments at this time?
No, Michael, thank you.
Right, Councilmember Watson?
I appreciate the detailed report, and I'm pleased with the direction everything's going with the forest. Thank you very much. No questions.
Councilmember Pereira?
No questions again. Thank you for all the work on this, and I think the guiding principles that are really outlined in the master plan, I think, really encapsulate how our community views the forest and the benefits and the responsibility we have for it. So thank you for capturing that. I think having that broader perspective helps inform the day-to-day policy decisions. Thank you.
Mark, I tremendously appreciate all the years that you've served the city and also as the city's forester. And really, as Councilmember Pereira said, really implemented the vision of the people of Arcata in a really unique and outstanding way, really in a very world-class way, and that really reflects in the report to the council. And I'm very, sorry to see you retiring, but I'm sure that you have other things you want to do in your life, and I can certainly understand that.
Yeah, well, I'll be back for one more council meeting.
Do we have any members of the public who indicated that they want to comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
All right, well, thank you, Mark.
Okay, thank you.
Right, next is item C, receive an update from Community Development Director Loya and City Engineer Katry on data center and fiber projects.
Good evening again, mayor, vice mayor, and council members. Before I started on this staff report, which obviously is dwarfed by Mark's presentation. You know, I just wanted to point out that once I was presenting with Mark, and I want to state this into the record right now, because it's just a great story. Once I was presenting with Mark, and I had just done my PowerPoint and, you know, whatever it was about, who cares? And then Mark was going next, and he gets up and he says, I don't have a PowerPoint, but I have some powerful points. I just want to acknowledge, I mean, looking back on the body of work that Mark has done for the city, it's just, it's powerful. So thank you for that. Okay, so I am telling you, I'm gonna kick this off, and then nature's gonna pick it up. I'm gonna tell you a little bit about the Vera Networks project and the Edge Connects project, these data projects that are happening in the city of Arcata. A little bit about the public event that we held to share what's going on with the community, and then Andrew's gonna pick up and tell you where the status of those permits and where they're at. So Vera Networks is the project proponent for the fiber project, and Edge Connects is the project proponent for the data center. Data center is going in on Eleventh Street at the old Copeland number, or you may remember it is the McKinney Do-It-Best. And the fiber project is running throughout town. I'll let nature describe where those are going. But both projects are principally permitted. That is that they don't require a planning permit. They just require ministerial, over-the-counter building permits, as long as they comply with the standards we issued the permits. But we did hear a number of community members when they, you know, heard about the projects on the news, that they wanted to you know, they wanted to know more about the project. So we worked with Edge Connects and Vera Networks to hold the town hall and let them talk about their projects and respond directly to the community. And also opened an avenue for us to talk with them a little bit about, in particular with the data center, about, you know, their energy use. I'll talk a little bit more about that. City of Arcata, the, you know, region, county. It's, it's really a throughput, and so a lot of energy has been put into trying to work with the developers to ensure that we actually have access to this throughput, and they don't just pass us by. And, you know, I would point particularly to the work that, the tireless work that Connie Stewart has done to ensure that our region benefits from these projects. So that was one of the things that came out of this, this town hall. So that was one of the things that came out of this, uh, this town hall. Um, the, uh, and I'll, I'll let nature talk a little bit more about, you know, what the details of that are, what it's going to look like in the ground, how they're going to do the, the installation of it. The real issue that I think was driving this for most people was the data center project. They were concerned about, you know, is there going to be light glares? Are there going to be noise? You know, how many trucks are going to come? How many people are going to be there? What does the site look like? That, that sort of thing. And so, um, Edge Connects did provide some, you know, some background on the company in general. They have several sites on the West Coast. I think they mentioned eight, uh, other data centers in the city or in the state of California and twelve on the West Coast. They also operate data centers elsewhere in the country and around the world. Um, they said that this is a small data center relative to the ones that they, they operate. This is relatively small. Um, and it's really, it's, it's kind of like the first point on land that's an anchor to ensure that the data that's flowing through those fibers has a place to land. Um, they had special requirements. They couldn't be out at the Harbor District's property because, um, you know, that was, uh, you know, because of the, the risk of tsunami and that sort of thing. So Arcata was really the first landing spot that they could find, um, to put a data center to, to make sure that the, the integrity of the data is maintained. And so that's why they selected this site. As I mentioned earlier, it's a principally permitted activity at the site according to our code, uh, the public's questioning. They're not going to have a lot of traffic at the site. Very few trucks are going to be coming. The light's going to be basically what the light is on the site right now and all focused downward. But there is a potential for, you know, these HVAC units to create some, some noise. So we'll, we'll be working with the project proponent and the manufacturers to make sure that it's, you know, that they comply with our codes. Um, I guess, you know, the, the only other thing that I wanted to mention was that, you know, that as a data center, they basically, what their business is, is to create a framework for companies that need to store data to put their computers into that data center and, and run them. So they provide a shell, they provide the rack space, they provide HVAC units, and they provide electricity. And they lease that space based on those metrics to, to these companies. Um, so it's a highly energetic, uh, hungry use, right? So right now we're working to connect with, uh, Janik Canyon from the Blue Lake Rancheria. As you're aware, they have a microgrid and, um, they have, you know, all the, the, uh, battery backup and, and solar power. And, and they, they are relatively off-grid. Um, and so we've been leveraging her expertise and their experience in creating a microgrid and having conversations with Edge Connects about, uh, converting their facility to, um, you know, a solar-driven with battery backup as a first line of defense. So probably still have to have a, a diesel generator in case the power goes completely out. Um, but, you know, trying to show them that it's cost-effective for them to do that. And much like your discussion earlier about the, the reach code or, or a ban on, on gas, we're trying to convince them that moving away from a grid solution and moving into a power plant solution is actually cost-effective and beneficial for them. And they're actually, they're, they're, they've been very open to it. We've already had one meeting and suspect we'll have additional ones. Um, so those, those were the primary, um, pieces that came up around, uh, the data center at this, uh, this public meeting we had. Um, and Nitra, can you talk a little bit about, uh, the, where the permit status is at and what, what we're looking at in terms of the permits and that sort of thing?
Oh yeah, definitely. Um, thank you, David. Um, good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember, and member of staff and member of the public. Um, I will start with, uh, Bureau Networks, um, like David did. So if you are able to see my screen I'm sharing. And this was the original map that was submitted just prior to submitting an incremental permit application, um, for those, uh, trenches for the, you know, fiber lines. So in this map, you will see three different segments. Uh, segment one, which runs along K Street and ends up at the data center at M Street. And then there's the other one along I Street, uh, called segment two. And there's a segment three, which goes from data center along Eighth Street. Uh, no, sorry, along Seventh Street to Union, then Old Arcata, and ultimately ends up at Memorial Avenue. So in last, I would say two to three months, we received like a two different application. One is for the installation of segment one and two, and other one is installation of, uh, segment three. Uh, we are reviewing the plan, this project. If you have any questions, let me know. And then the other project, which is the data center, uh, we see the building permits two months ago on that. We did the review of those plans in-house and we ensured that, you know, they are compliant with current building code. We submitted, um, responded back to them with comments. And then the comment didn't include the comments from various departments, from community development and environmental services. So those comments are included. And they will be submitting plans in a week or two. They are also on the aggressive schedule. They want to start the construction, um, early next year for the project. So that is the status of permits on the, these two projects. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
So starting with Councilmember Pereira, do you have any questions or comments on this?
No, I don't. I think, um, I think this presentation today breaks up of, you know, outlining, I think some of the questions that people have had about like, why, why is this big new project happening and what the process is for that? So thank you for, for doing that town hall and giving the community an opportunity, even though it was something that was principally permitted. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Watson.
No, thank you.
Uh, Vice Mayor Patino.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Uh, first one is, you know, we just passed the dig once policy. And how, how is that going to be applied to this project? Or will it be applied to this project?
That is not applicable to the data center project, but it will be applicable to the, um, Bureau Networks project or the trenching project. Because I think our dig ones policy is for the trenching or horizontal boring on the city highway. So anytime there's a work on the road that has a trenching or boring more than two blocks, three blocks or six hundred feet, they have to comply with our dig ones policy.
Okay, great. That's, that's the first question. Second one is, it, are there going to be any full-time employees at this, uh, data center? And how many would they be? Approximately.
Yeah, I believe they're going to have, um, not, uh, employees onsite all the time, but there are office spaces, uh, for, you know, technicians to come and, and work out of. Um, I do think that they'll have a, um, you know, security guard periodically there, um, as I understand it. Um, but it's not, it's, it's, once the data center is up and running, it requires a little bit of feeding and, and care, but it doesn't require constant maintenance, as I understand it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Well, being, being a, uh, longtime checky, I get excited about things like this. I remember when I was about fifteen or sixteen years old back in nineteen sixty-five, that I read an article in, in, uh, Popular Science about fiber optic communications and the tremendous possibilities for that, that happening. An article called Light Fantastic. And, uh, so it's interesting to me as a, as a techy to see this, uh, coming to fruition. Uh, the other possibility on this, also from a tech perspective, is if this is producing this much heat, would they consider running a, uh, a, a hot water line from here to take the heat away and run it to businesses in, in the neighborhood as a way of utilizing this waste heat or space heating?
Um, I, I can do any cellular technology that I'm aware of.
Uh, do we have any members of the public who, uh, have indicated they want to comment on this item?
We do have public comments. Is that you, Kent?
Hello, this is Kent Swatzy again. I've been watching this project. And it's a little bit disconcerting that we're dealing with these gigantic companies that are going to make literally billions of dollars. And we can't even be considered to be beneficiaries of this. Uh, I mean, you're playing with the big people. They're not considerate. They totally disrupted the crab fishing season out there. And I think litigation had to be filed. They, um, are not considerate. They're not team players with the local economy. Uh, I, my understanding is that the, the construction that's going to be gone on a majority of these projects related to this table, the landing and everything it passes through will be outside contractors. I haven't heard our local engineering, uh, operators getting work out of this project. And it just kind of seems like we're kind of being, uh, used and run over the top of. Uh, and that's not uncommon for these big gigantic billion-dollar outfits. The jobs that benefit from this apparently are all going over to inland area, maybe Redding or somewhere else. And we're just kind of left high and dry. We were promised jobs out of this, but I'm not hearing where they're happening at all. And I see very little, uh, benefit to the public locally regarding having these people come running through our world here. So I kind of wish you'd, uh, kind of throw the monkey wrench in them and ask what they're willing to do for us. In other words, if people do want to benefit from this project, to be able to hook up to at our level, I think that should be part of negotiation. And I think it's your job and the county's and, uh, not just a hundred and thirty-eight thousand a year, whatever check is for the Harvard District. And kind of, uh, I don't know, throw the people under the bus, but that's just my opinion. I wish you guys to take a stand and deal with these people and let them know all facets that we expect something out of this to benefit our community, something in the public interest. Thank you for my opportunity to speak on this. Oh, I did wish to thank those of you who are leaving, uh, the two council members here for their service. Yeah, I think your institutional knowledge will be missed. I, I'd like to take that opportunity now to do so. Thank you.
Right. Any other public comments at this time?
There is no other public comment.
Right. Um, thank you. Next is other council and staff reports. Uh, do we have any, uh, further comments from, uh, from staff at this time, Karen?
Uh, we do not.
All right. Uh, starting with, uh, Vice Mayor Patino.
Yeah, um, I, uh, was at HTA this morning, uh, virtually, and, um, we are continuing to look at, um, getting to zero emission buses. And it looks like more and more what may, what will probably make sense is hydrogen for the long haul and battery electric, uh, for the short. In other words, ETS and AMRTS, running battery electric and, um, the RTS Trinidad, Scotia being, uh, uh, hydrogen. So it's, uh, it's complicated. We're going to probably end up with both, uh, styles. And of course with hydrogen, we either have to produce it here or it has to be shipped in. And, um, so there's, uh, a lot of consideration for that. Um, with the battery electrics, in order for them to really work well for us, especially if we went all battery electric and didn't use hydrogen, we'd have to go, uh, to some pretty giant, uh, charging network throughout the county. So, um, we're continuing to study it. The final report has come in from, uh, SHOT Engineering, um, where we, uh, where they studied all the alternatives. And, um, again, that's where it's kind of pointing us to using a hybrid system. And again, possibly batteries will get better, um, over the next few years and it'll change the perspective. But at this point, it, it looks like that's where we are. Um, recently, uh, because of my, uh, connection to HTA and being part of a, like a transit community, I, I really want to pass on my concern for the city of Arcata.
Councilmember Watson.
I do not have anything to report. Thank you.
I attended a meeting of RCA. The finances of RCA have gotten much tighter, mostly because of this, uh, cost recovery through something called the, that I've mentioned before called the PCIA, the Power Charge Indifference Adjustment. And, uh, I think PGD is abusing this and, uh, pushing for it to be a lot higher than is justified. And that puts, um, uh, RCA and other CCs in a, uh, much more difficult financial position. The board adopted a, uh, a new plan in which the, um, uh, power mix would have, uh, no more, no higher renewable component than the, uh, minimum that is mandated by the State of California. So I, I was very disappointed in our, our financial situation pushing us in that direction. The, uh, next is dates of future meetings. Uh, confirm the start time of noon for the meeting to declare election results, swearing new council members and elect, uh, uh, the mayor and vice mayor on December tenth, uh, twenty twenty by, uh, teleconference. Do we need to take an action on it or does that just stand as it is?
Uh, that will stand as it is. We've confirmed with the incoming council members that that time will work for all of them.
And with this, we are adjourned.